... Would you call the board, please?
Yes, James Schrader or James Schrader?
Uh, yes. And Sandy, do you have questions about your name?
It's what I do today. Jeff and Sandy.
Yes, ma'am.
Kinsley Hacker.
Here.
Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
Hannah.
All right, I have proof of posting the agenda for the public allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any changes? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This next one, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the ones that are listed?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, for those of you who are wondering, we were missing, uh, we were missing a line on the bottom from some of our adjournments. So, this is a corrected, uh, corrected minutes.
Yep, they were written, it's just the minutes that the board will pronounce, do you get that?
Yep. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to approve the payroll and disbursements?
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I will vote yes. For my report, as you will see later on in our agenda, you have a letter that was crafted by, by our superintendent.
Business manager.
And business manager. Who had a birthday yesterday and turned 22. We had this discussion earlier, we're good. So, that will be, uh, the whole purpose of this letter is to, if we approve it, to the governor's office and let him know, let the office know how the funding has affected Wisconsin Heights over the years and in his new current budget. So, that's what I got. Mark?
Um, early release coming up on Wednesday, going to provide updates for staff as well as they're going to have some, some time to work together in K-12 vertical curriculum meetings. I have been working with the district leadership team and administration in terms of calendar feedback. I know, uh, need to be talking about that, usually we talk about it in two-year increments. Some of the conversations we've had have talked about, uh, what would early release look like? Would there be a time for all-day sessions instead of all half-day sessions? And, um, the feedback I've received, is that a mixture? Or some well-timed things, we've got a curriculum planning, they have some curriculum adoptions coming up, so maybe there could be some options, so I'll put that out there. So, something to consider, hopefully, in the next, maybe on the 23rd, if not the first meeting in March, we can get some stuff put together. So, otherwise, we'll stick to a similar format. The one thing, just a reminder to the board, we do have some flexibility, and we're no longer tied to the number of days, but we still have expectations of minutes. And, one of the other conversations we have in the district leadership team is, are we optimizing the time we're working with our students in relation to bus pickup time, bus drop-off and start of school? You know, the biggest thing that I get asked from time to time, I'm sure Dale's been asked too, is, you know, what happens if we were to change this? Well, the reality is, based on our busing, which is a stack system, um, you know, one secondary, one either secondary elementary goes first, and then they flip. And, to do anything else, we'll just be expanding and increase time, et cetera. So, uh, so I think that's been a very positive conversation. As Tom alluded to, a lot going on. I'll be meeting with the support staff and then also teaching staff, as I said before, on Wednesday, just updating them on the referendum, as well as the feat of the survey and asking them to, you know, informing them first of all that the survey was a starting point, conversation starter, and finding out some ways to dialogue about, hey, what's a couple things we could do better, what would it look like, and move forward. And also, letting them know that, you know, we are advocating on the district's behalf and asking, you know, them to help, help in that message. And, tonight, as you noticed, a few more people in the building, Moxel Ensemble, so I think they're going until probably nine o'clock, nine-thirty, but, uh, we definitely, our music program, vocal and instrumental, has grown significantly in the last couple of years, and, you know, good stuff. And then they've got an honors band, as you see, but we'll have several students attending that next week. Thank you.
All right, public governmental relations committee from earlier this evening, Kim?
Certainly, we, we met with Dennis Drier from the DOT to explain, have him explain the regulations regarding outdoor signage at the middle high school complex. We had talked for roughly six months, uh, putting some sort of sign out here at the building. And, from this, and then we also met with two vendors who gave us their ideas and input. From this point on, we're going to review the information that we received to see if, if it fits within the needs of the district, that's one of the big things, or is there a better way to get the information across that, that we're planning to have on the sign? Would you say that's a summary, Tom?
I would say that that would do it.
We also, uh, briefly discussed number six on the District E6, but we will discuss that further, or with the total board.
All right, public input, Jim, did anybody sign up? Uh, no? Okay. All right, moving on, district business personnel, discuss possible action to hire Autumn, is it Sable?
Mm-hmm.
As EA at Mazo Elementary with a starting annual rate of thirteen thirty-six an hour.
Move.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. A motion to approve Cora Gulickson as coordinator of the math contest at Mazo Elementary with a stipend of three hundred.
Move.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. A motion to approve Cora Gulickson as coordinator of the math contest at Mazo Elementary with a stipend of three hundred.
Move.
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve Matthew Brauner as volunteer coach for the 2015 baseball season.
Move.
I'll second.
Well, I wondered if we'd get a, a motion.
Where's Matt when I need him?
Discussion.
Do we have any Libertum members who volunteer coaching?
No, we've, we've asked, yeah, it's, it's really the athletic director, we, we take direction from the athletic director of the coach. I think, I think we're at two.
Yeah.
And all, and we, we will be in the process of hiring assistant baseball coaches, as proposed, and I know Rich will be doing interviews soon. So, as we know, with the, with baseball and softball, having an extra set of eyes for hitting ground balls, fielding, you know, in the outfield and pitching, I think that they all kind of specialize in it.
So, head coaches as a coach and two.
That's correct.
Yep, and I don't think both volunteers are there all the time, every time. I know that they're a lot, but, you know, so, that gives an extra help. Yeah. And Matt was there last year.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion to accept donation from community organizations for the purpose of purchasing wireless microphones.
Move.
Second. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
A, uh, what's the total amount? Mark, do you have that?
Uh, in talking with Anyal, eleven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from one, two, three, four, five, six, six organizations. Couple grants, Jim also helped out with the consulting too, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
That kind of adds to our, we, we upgraded the sound system a couple of years ago, and couldn't do everything, but, uh, once we knew what we needed, this has provided an excellent opportunity. Good stuff. Anyal shared that she was able to, uh, had an email today, I think they're hoping for eight microphones, they now can get ten, based on a recoup, so they're only renting two this year, so they're...
Cool.
It was, uh, they were, they were, they were renting approximately two thousand dollars a year in Wisconsin.
Wow, wow.
So, apparent Pam Cashman wrote the grants and organized the fundraising, so special thanks to Pam.
Yeah.
And, uh, so now, the, the biggest thing that'll happen is that, is that the rental of this equipment, the, the students only had two days to practice with it, as part of, because it would have been...
In the past.
In the past. It would have been considerably more to rent them for an additional week. And, and this way, um, the, the students will be able to practice with them as soon as they get them, and, uh, it, it leads to, it's pretty high-tech for, for the school, so, definitely to support that.
Good thanks to Miss Catherine Amelia for coordinating and to the donors. All right, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. District business, discuss possible action to contract with Olson Toon Landscaping for three years, uh, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen for snowboarding law.
So, second.
Thank you. And, they were, they were the lowest bid.
That is correct.
Yep. Jim, uh, got a motion. Any other discussion?
Jim? Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to contract with Lifetouch for three years, uh, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen for school and athletic vouchers. So, move. Second. That's what we're using now, right?
No, no, our, our current vendor did, uh, was purchased, they're now Interstate, used to be Denstrom, they were purchased about a year and a half ago, and decided not to reopen it, to, to go. They're based, uh, northern Minnesota, I, I don't know where Interstate is now, but, uh, yep.
Okay, other discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
We actually didn't use Lifetouch, uh, previous Denstrom, so, Dale, it's been five years with Denstrom, I think, so...
Yeah, maybe not quite five, four anyway.
Four or five.
Yep.
I was Lifetouch prior to that. I used to use my...
Yeah, yep.
All right, moving on, discuss possible action to approve homework glass to complete indoor repair and replacement for the middle school district office with a cost not to exceed eighty-nine thousand. Fair motion.
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So, this'll keep water out of our buildings and cold out of our buildings and, um, keep you happy because you won't be freezing in there.
Yeah, fewer sweaters. Yeah, and, uh, monorail glass, we use them in the past for some repair, as well as they installed the windows in the clear story with the, uh, project last year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve payment to JRT Top Not Roofing AFP number four totaling thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, this is it?
Yeah, so, four, well, four technically isn't it, five is.
Okay.
Four is the work done, so, the work completed, so, the subs will now get paid for work completed, all their partial liens or complete liens if their work was done, and this has been approved by IRS. So, that's number four, and then I'll kind of talk about number five once we get to it.
Okay.
All the work has been completed and certified.
Something we never thought was gonna happen in the way it was. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll definitely vote yes.
I almost did.
All right, discuss possible action to approve payment to JRT Top Not Roofing AFP number five totaling forty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, so, this is, this is a motion.
Yeah, so, I just, I just wanted, uh, so, okay, tomorrow, um, we've got the cut check for number four, JRT has been told that, you know, the check will be coming. Once they receive the check, then they need to bring all, send IRS all the other information, like the roof warranty, um, in, in terms of, let's see, you know, the roof warranty, and then, once they've gotten that, roof warranty and the addendum, so, the payment, until we agree upon the addendum, will be withheld. But, I'm prepared for you, go ahead and make the motion, otherwise it would be on there. I'm hoping, quite honestly, the last two weeks, a lot of stuff has gotten done, I really thought this would be on the agenda for the 23rd, the number five. So, once IRS reviews it and is, you know, in receipt, then, you know, and they've shown us a, a copy, a voided copy of the warranty, we just want that in place, once they get it, it's sent to us, then we'll release the funds.
And some of this was hold back and...
This is, this is retainage, this is, per the contract, five percent of the product.
Yep. So, this isn't like extra, huge amounts of extra money on top of where we thought we were going to be, it's just...
No, this is...
The final payments.
Yep, so, and then after that, separate from this, is the IRS, once they're done, they'll submit for forty percent of their project. So, they pay sixty percent for design, forty percent upon completion, while all said and due.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. And, now we're on to number six, discuss possible action on school board support of state budget items related to the Wisconsin Heights School District. So, as I said, there, um, and as Jim alluded to, yes, we discussed this in our public relations governmental meeting, and it was recommended from that, um, group to bring it to the full board for discussion and possible support. So, please browse through it, I think it's very pointed, um, it really sets up what, um, what the new budget is going to, how it's going to affect our district, uh, not only that, but it also shows, um, where we've gotten hurt over the last few years, um, with state budgets, and, um, I am, I'm in support of it, so...
In fact, and I, I won't read everything, but I'll hit the, the high points. Wanted them to know who we were, and, you know, emphasizing that we only get twenty percent state aid, um, you know, we're asked to be transparent, we're asked to be accountable, and, you know, we ask the same. Give them a little bit of a percentage, what have we done, you know, over, almost four million from two thousand four to twenty twelve. We've run three operating referendums, we're running a fourth. And emphasize, these amounts do not address any proposed cuts in the budget, and there's no anticipated, and the district proposing operating referendums with the current formula. In terms of the loss, I mean, this is one of the things that, it, we're asked to be predictable, and, you know, a couple of years ago, we were told, schools need a little more money, so here it is, now that money gets taken away. Uh, and that's delineated, I, I used a document from the Taxpayers Alliance, um, they're an outside organization, I, in terms of numbers, Taxpayer Alliance, non-affiliated, fair facts, they tell you the way it is, they're kind of like legislative fiscal bureau, but outside the government. The biggest thing is, you know, in 2016, we're operating, you know, proposed at best, or as proposed, nine thousand eight fifteen, you know, we're back to 2014, and, you know, you think, you go all the way back, this is, where were we, this is the same as 2009 numbers, and a lot has changed since 2009. Um, when they say money is available, it is not, you know, we, some money is restored in the second year, uh, again, when you mess with the formula, when you take money away, it, it is devastating, you know, to districts. Short-term, as the letter says, we'll get through it, but, you know, this, this is, we're starting to see a pattern, and, you know, this is bad for long-term operating. So, and then, again, Aaron helped out, and the business, local business officials have collaborated, so, on the top of page two, really kind of shows you what's, what's changed. And so, you know, bottom line, we're gonna be, we're, we're estimating right now at a hundred and six thousand six fifty less. Impact on the proposed revenue, uh, it's, the current referendum, nothing for the, you know, for this year, but, you know, the changes have the opportunity to impact referendum, will also just change the operating, you know, the need for operational dollars in the future. Nothing that I've mentioned so far talks about money taken away from vouchers. To be absolutely clear, and I'll, and I'll just maybe, the best way to put it is a little graphic here. We talk about the educational dollars. With the statewide vouchers, a couple of years ago, thousand, capped at a thousand enrollment, that is totally off the top. Although Wisconsin Heights pays in, we have no access to voucher dollars, totally off the top. That's capped at a thousand right now, the, next year, they, they're proposing to take off the limit. The one change is that you have to be in a private school to access the money, you no longer can access it, uh, from a public, so you can't go public to private, as proposed. But, again, things can change. Then, we've got the pot, and this is where we're still funding the Milwaukee voucher schools, if you look at your tax bill, it's there, we pay, what, about thirty-five thousand into, between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand every year, for Wisconsin Heights goes to Milwaukee. Um, and then also, we address open enrollment expenditures here. You know, the other part of it is, we, at Wisconsin Heights, twenty-two hundred dollars of state aid per student, vouchers will get three times that. You know, we'd like to get voucher money.
So, students who are already going to private schools, already being paid for by their parents or scholarships, however, will now get money from this fund to pay their way.
Right. Yep. And that's off the top. And some of that, that may change, understand that this budget is being negotiated, you know, that's what's out there right now. So, things, as we know, can change pretty quick. Again, the other parts of this budget, that the, you know, the Senate, the Senate bill, in which a lot of educational organizations are supportive, or supporting, or are willing to, to work with people on, has a different accountability system that we assemble. And, um, how should I put it, if, if you're getting public money, why, why wouldn't you have the same accountability? Right. And right now, that, that is a strong lobby to have different tests, the, the message is, let the parents choose. And, and I understand that, I mean, being a parent myself and understanding that, we like to guide our children and, and say, this is the way, this is, this is our family's way, this is who we are, this is what we do, you know, I think that's, again, another, other positive Wisconsin Heights, but, uh, we're not being acknowledged for that, you know, we've got schools that are exceeding expectations, yet we're penalized. And it's just the opposite of like, what's being discussed at, at the Capitol. Other things hidden expenses, you know, right now, smarter balance, they, you know, there's a movement that that will be eliminated after one year. Our staff has worked incredibly hard to meet new expectations, learn the new test, to be told, after three or four years of preparation, that because of ideological, philosophical differences, we're going in the wrong direction. I will share and update you that, that this DPI has some questions about smarter balance, they are not delivering as expected, they're holding back payment, this, the test will be slightly scaled back. But, again, how should I put it, it's hard enough to adopt a, a math curriculum or a language art, it's not hard, it's time-intensive. And, once people feel like they've done their work, we'd like to see people rewarded for that, and, you know, unfortunately, that's not happening. That is gonna cost incredible amounts of money, research and development, it's like engineering roads, as we've observed, you know, two, two-thirds of the road, the new entrance, was engineering, and, you know, research and development for tests, the same thing. Um, you know, bottom line is, a majority, a, a supermajority of the school districts and schools are exceptional in Wisconsin, and I would like, I would hope that, uh, our leaders recognize that and support people for, for who we are, so... If you'd like other things put in, you know, how's the time or feedback, uh, that's where we're at, again, as I told, told you earlier, we're talking to staff and, and just giving them feels for what they do, and we'll be there to support them through this.
Well, like I said before, I think one of the things disappoints me the most is, a few years ago, we were promised that if we were an exceptional school, um, with the report cards and so on and such forth, we would get additional dollars filtered our way. Well, here we are, a few years later, and not only are we not getting additional dollars, but they are also taking more away, so, I think that's what disappoints me the most.
Sure, possibility, I, I'm not certain how everybody feels about bold face, um, type, but there were, there are two instances where, where the emphasis may, may not be overlooked by whoever reads this. Uh, one I'm looking at is, uh, is page one, paragraph beginning another referendum, uh, the last sentence. Um, I think it's very important that, that our legislatures realize that, that not only Wisconsin Heights, but many school districts will need to have operating referendums every... but many school districts will need to have operating referendums every other year. And our state tax will go down five dollars and my local tax will go up just because of that. And that's exactly the result. Maybe underline or underscore or-
Or tile size or something.
Just to make it stand out.
The other thing that you-
The rest of the board agrees.
That you mentioned that, Jim, the other part of this is that these budgets come out after we have to set our referendum. You know, it used to be thirty-plus days and now we have to make a decision prior to a budget announcement. Just pointing that out, that's another, another hurdle.
And then, then the second point of emphasis would be on page two. Under voucher impact.
Last two sentences.
To highlight the district will receive what we receive in state aid compared to voucher schools.
I don't know if I would change, they already know that, they already, I'm, they're very aware of where we're at, I'm sure, and what the vouchers are, where the vouchers are at.
I think- And we, we're going to release, release this to the public too, right?
They know it, the public, the public, we want to highlight.
I'm thinking that, that in, in the interest of our district, hopefully, our citizens will, this will, any person we've told this to is shocked, is completely shocked, they can't believe it. And so emphasis on that would, I think, be in stating our case, why we need to do this, why we need to go.
I agree.
Is the amount more important than the fact that it's taken off the top? That's also, I mean, that's, that's something that, you know, it's my understanding as, as the conversations occur, people said, really? We didn't know that, we didn't know voucher money was coming off the top.
That would be very, again, a highlightable one. The other thing I was wondering is if, I think you initially said we're going to send it to the governor. I think rather than doing that, I would, I would send it to all the Republican and Democratic senators and assemblymen.
Well, would you wanna do that? What they're doing differently in terms of protocol, like I mispronounced Jeremy's name, but he's from Fond du Lac. He has asked for all feedback, he's in the Assembly, and so, and he said, please send it to, I think it's the Education Chair, so.
That'd be, that'd be-
Just a goal there.
Yeah.
Because what is happening is, some offices, you know, I, how should I put it? For the past several years, some offices started discarding because if you're not a citizen or if you're not, if they're not your representative, then they, they're not reading it. But if people have asked for it, then that's the invitation.
Definitely, you know, that would be the best way to do that. Want to thank you and Aaron and whoever else collaborated, it's very well written, very informative and-
We'll post it on the page.
Highly discouraging. Do you wanna have a page where we have a line, you know, sign your names to?
Penny, do we have everybody's signature?
For?
Just electronic?
No.
Sometimes we've had in the past, probably.
I don't think so.
For a while?
Yeah. I don't think I do.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that, if we, we'll do that and then we can-
Do we wanna sign one copy tonight and get it to you?
I guess I wanted to have a cover letter, so I just.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if you're gonna hold all this stuff, finish it and then get it back.
Yeah. I would say if we can get a, a clean sheet, a paper and a black pen, we'd be able to scan, if that's okay. I'm thinking we could maybe need two signatures. So everybody doesn't have a lot in our file.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt this with the changes that Jim had?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Thanks again.
Yes, thank you. Hearing none, Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Sandy.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Yep.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I will yes as well.
If I can add, you know, I think I reversed the voucher thing, I apologize. It's not from private, it's, you have to go from public to private, sorry about that. Catching that. Yeah, 'cause it's the reverse of last year, yep, sorry about that.
All right, second reading of policy on Technical College Excellence Scholarship. So this one will need a motion. Have a motion to, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hopefully you all read it and if you had questions or concerns, you got them to the appropriate people before this.
Just a quick reminder, this is similar for the four-year schools, now we have a two-year. This is, the number of scholarships is based on student population, so, for Wisconsin Heights.
Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Sandy.
Yeah.
Jeff. Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I will yes as well. Mark, do we need any other, do we need any meetings?
We're, Vivian and I seem to chat, so. I guess if we wanna schedule, next, next board meeting, HSR will be here, have the conversation, they will come in with proposals, explain what they would do for the pavement, proposal and project. And I've shared some of the things that were asked about quarrying, how do you determine, you know, is there, what, how do you determine what, what's the work that's gonna be done? Same thing for the Maze Amity HVAC. I would say early March, or the first, the planned first meeting, March probably have buildings and grounds meeting just to talk about end of year projects.
Who's on the looking grounds?
Yeah. Then, then with the, then with that-
Just sort of asking from now on.
Yeah.
Jim, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The second part would be, and Amy, just chime in a little bit. I guess probably the facilities and transportation, do it on the twenty, the second one, March, and then the, March ninth, maybe the curriculum, it's gonna be, be in the middle, almost done with language reading arts, may have recommendation feedback on math at that point.
Curriculum when?
Curriculum on the ninth, I believe.
Do you wanna have the facility meeting from thirty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At six-thirty?
Yep. Should be good. You wanna do six o'clock for curriculum, just in case for- And then, in the, in the past, we have, in March during referendum years, had meetings at the villages. Would you like to continue doing that, we've kinda suggested that?
Yep.
So, March ninth, the meeting, board meeting will be in the Black Earth LMC and March twenty-third would be the Maze Amity LMC.
Okay.
You'll be able to see a couple of updates and so. Actually, actually a lot's changed in two years.
Are you gonna go have that in the newsletter?
Yeah, we'll have that in the newsletter, Aaron, if you can emphasize that too for people.
Yep. And then throw it on the website.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll have the committee meeting, we'll have the committee meetings also in the offices.
Yeah. Okay. And just a reminder, there is a meeting next Monday, sixteen.
Monday, seven o'clock in the People Services meeting room over here. Yep, it's all the way down, take a right, first is going left. There will be a referendums meet that night, but there's the high school on six and seven grade.
All right, direct motion to adjourn. Thank you. All those in favor, I.
I am.
Opposed. Thank you all for coming.